America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prayer?
Father God, thanks for another day. I'm grateful for this Thanksgiving season that we're in. Lord, I know, but I'm very aware that there's some very lonely people in our community during the holiday season, and I just pray for us, each of us, to be good neighbors and just be aware of the people around us. Thanks for this meeting. Thanks for these people who are serving our community with you. Just give them peace and great wisdom tonight. We love you and thank you in Jesus' name. Amen.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Williams.
Here.
Councilor Burke.
Here.
Councilor Berger.
Here.
Councilor Ian Smith. And I do see him on the line.
Here.
Okay. Counselor Kristen Smith.
Here.
Counselor Taylor.
Here.
Counselor Zimmerman.
Here.
Roll call is complete, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Welcome everyone here tonight. Glad to see faces out there and on the Internet. I do have a couple announcements. One is that the Christmas wreaths are scheduled to be hung this week on down Mineral Avenue in California. Cam, you were going to talk about Santa on the Move.
Yes, Santa on the Move is this Saturday. Santa and the Christmas crew will be on the fire trucks, and they'll be escorted by Libby Police Department, which is awesome. And then they will go around town, starting at, I believe, about 1:00, and then at 5:00 they will end up down at the end of Mineral for Santa's workshop, Santa's village and the tree lighting. Yep, pile of stuff.
Thank you. Do you want to remind people that winter snow parking ordinances are into, are in effect? If you have any doubts where to park your car, check the ordinance so you are, make sure that you are out of the way of snow piles when that snow starts. Anybody else have an announcement? Then we will move on to the approval of the regular minutes of the regular council meeting, 1663, held on October 21st.
Make a motion to approve City Council Meeting Minutes 1663.
Second.
Anyone have any corrections or additions? Any public comments on meetings minutes for 1663? Mr. Orr.
Yeah, I'm D.C. Orr, 1117 Nevada Avenue, Mere and Council. October 21st meeting, I believe, was one where Councilman Smith acknowledged in the general comments from council that she has never kept minutes in her committees. I think that the record, public records should definitely reflect an admission like that. Thank you.
Anyone else? Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, I bring the discussion back to the council table. Without checking, I don't know that that is actually the meeting where you made that statement. Do you?
I don't. Can we review the minutes?
The minutes.
Or the minutes that?
We would have, so postpone the minutes until we review the main, okay? Because I actually think it was a different meeting.
Okay.
So, okay, then we will, sorry, we will postpone action on these minutes until the next meeting. Bring us on to committee reports. City Administrator's report.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Council. With the sewer main replacements coming near the finish line, we're going to be getting the final tally of all the costs. There was a lot of unforeseen cost due to storm water, water issues with our mains, with the storm water. At one point, we found stuff that was paved over, that was crushed, so we had to get that approved. It's going to near the $100,000 range for all the projects. The good thing is, we do have that funding within the capital improvements plan to pay for that. I've almost got all the information together now from all the laws and rules governing the grease traps and the use of them within the city. So I'm going to be putting together proposals and some recommendations. From there, we're going to be getting with the Department of Health, working with them, and then we'll do a presentation of mayor to come before the council with those recommendations. Water Department is actually running very smoothly. We received 17 applications for the water distribution position that's still open right now. We just haven't quite found that right person yet, so again, if anybody knows somebody that would be qualified for the position, please encourage them to apply right here at City Hall. We're going to be talking to everybody we can until the position's filled. We're continuing working on the open cut mining permit. The main issue with that right now is identifying all wells within a thousand-foot radius because it's very vague when they have locations, so it's kind of hard to pinpoint exactly where they're at. And the reason we have to do that is we can only dig so deep with our permit in order to not mess with the groundwater itself, so those well permits actually tell us how deep the water is in those locations. One thing's going on, we're working with WWC Engineering now to produce the scope of work. I'll be having a meeting this week with them over the hydrology study and getting the spoils pile analyzed and some engineering done for the possibility of that becoming a parking lot or not. So I'll be working with him, and then we'll be getting with the NRDP grant people to make sure that's all approved before we move forward with anything presented to the council. And that's my report, Madam Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Williams?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Council. So we've finished up our sweeping activities for the year. Obviously, winter's upon us. The leak pickup went well. Just been trying to patch up some of the lingering hot holes, try to get that fielded up for the winter, and maintaining our sewer mains for jutting activities. We laid off our last seasonal worker for the winter. He will be back this next spring. He did a great job, so I'll be looking forward to bringing him back onboard. As Sam stated, Mr. Hibbs resigned from his position. He was gone, he's now of the state. He put in almost 11 years in the city, did a lot of great things. He was a tremendous asset, but as we all know, people, you know, they move on, we don't like to stand anybody's way for better themselves, so good luck to Mr. Hibbs. Pickleball Courts here, they both have, have both water and sewer services now. That was a coordinated effort with ER and diverse dirtworks. Been focusing on our equipment, cloud status, tires, brakes, lights, wipers, heat, et cetera. So we're ready to go there. The ice truck's ready to go. Sanders been placed on one of our pickups for the ice slicer, so we're ready for their winter activities. Sam stated we're wrapping up the last schedule, the Fifth Street project between Montana and Louisiana. Talk about their engineer today as far as their scheduling, their communication is, hopefully wrapping up by no later than the end of the week. So the crew's been busy doing maintenance and cleanup activities in and around both the street shop and the water shop upon Cedar Street, and they've been extremely busy throughout the year, so they're just trying to get things tidied up, get things put away, so when springtime comes, we can hit the ground running and kind of have a leg up on some things. I just want to kind of give a little simple explanation as far as the arc of communication goes, as far as for the city through the whole process and then coming back to the city. There's been some concerns, lots of phone calls, questions. So how that works is, if I have a concern or anybody within the city has a concern, Sam, myself, and the mayor, it goes through our city engineer, who's Frankie, or it's Mike Fraser, and Fraser has to take it, run it through their engineer, then their engineer runs it through the contractor, and the contractor runs it back through that channel. And it doesn't always go as you would, as quickly as you'd think or as you would like. Certainly not for me because I'm not a very patient person sometimes. So with that being said, it maintains that integrity and it maintains that line of communication, and it keeps us as a city out of, protects us from liabilities spoken or directed outside of our scope or authority. So there's days that, you know, you want to have answers now, but that's just, you have to run the chain. That's how, how I have to do it, so I've been directed to do it by my boss. He's very adamant about it, and that's what I, what I try to do. So hopefully I can kind of clarify a little bit as far as some of the delay or lag it may appear as does the process. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no fire report, a police report?
Madam Mayor, Council. This month, very well, we were very excited to see some of these numbers. Our call load, we had 167 calls in the month of November this year, or last year we had 128. That being said, this month we had zero assaults and zero missing violence calls, and we're very excited to hear that that violent crime has gone down this month, which usually doesn't typically happen statistically with the holiday season, so we're really excited about that. We had three threatening calls, five disorderly conduct, five disturbances, 11 thefts, one sex offense, 18 suspicious vehicles or persons, and two alcohol offenses, seven crashes, four of which admitted to being distracted, and over 48 traffic stops. So we've maintained our proactive stance, moving through the city as much as we can, and also spend a lot of our time doing calls of service. Again, we're more assisting the public, lots of calls for welfare checks, where people are concerned about family members, and they're going and helping them, helping with the ambulance crews on any medical calls, things like that. So we're also very busy, but fortunately we have seen a decrease in crime this month, so we're very excited to see those changes. So apart from that, we're still working with the Montana Tourism Council and purchasing that vehicle. It's been going very smoothly, working with the vendors, and so we should hopefully have that car here early spring. That's going for now, we'll talk more about the other grant, I guess. Any questions for me today?
Thank you very much. The ordinances are on the agenda, lights, streets and sidewalks issues are on the agenda, so is the building lease for Pure North. Zoning's on the agenda. And that, and you were going to talk about parks and cemetery.
Just that we are going to try to have a meeting here early next week and talk about a possible skate park that somebody wants to put in.
Okay. Thank you. That brings us to public comment on non-agenda items. If you want to talk about an item that's not on the agenda, and step to the podium, you have three minutes, say your name and address.
Karen Dinkins, 1210 Dakota Avenue. Madam Mayor and council members, an opportunity has arisen for me that will not allow me to serve on the Government Review Commission for the full two-year term, and so I will not qualify for this position within the next six to eight months. After discussion with the other commission members last week, and the understanding of the training that's involved with this commission, I've decided that it makes sense to allow a new member to get onboard quickly as opposed to waiting until we're half, three-quarters of the way through and then no longer be able to serve. So I've decided that I will resign from the commission now. With that said, I would be happy to stay onboard until a new member is appointed and then provide any of the training that I have gone through at this point in time, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And we have posted it, we have put out the advertisement, and LeAnn will be sending it out, thank you, on the email chain that we use to put out agendas to see if we can get some interest. Okay? Other items not on the agenda?
Hi, good evening, Madam Mayor, Council members. My name is Kaylee Conhour, Conhour Trucking here in town. Business address is 30711 US Highway 2, going towards Troy. I would like to propose a Christmas parade. I want to, I want to get the community together, on how trucks, lights, 4-H kids, Boy Scouts, the police, the volunteer ambulance. I just want to do something for the community. I just wonder if you guys thought about that. Route staging at the boulevard, big trucks might have to be in the parking lot of the memorial center, just depending, I'm going to try and get all of the trucks that I can, any big rigs, anything. And then going down Mineral and then down Second Street. I called the care center today, they would love it if we could loop down and around, and it sounds like the construction will be done on Louisiana, and we can just come back down Louisiana, south of the memorial center and just disperse after that. But yeah, they were totally onboard to have the residents out, not outside, but by the windows, waiting for everybody to come by. I'm proposing milk candy. It's way too cold, we don't need the kids out running toward the vehicles.
In the dark?
In the dark, exactly. Time-wise, I didn't get to reach out to all of the businesses on Mineral, obviously. I called the dome, they have movies starting at probably 7:00, opening at about 6:00, so I was thinking 5:30, that would, if that would be okay.
And you had mentioned the date of the 21st?
Yes. Yes, 21st, sorry.
What you would need from the city from this point would be to request the barricades and a street closure?
Okay.
And we also will need some trade insurance, event insurance?
Okay.
Okay? And you can talk to Gail because she thinks she might be able to umbrella you under the LA, LBA.
Under the Libby Area Business Association.
LBA.
We're 50123.
Okay.
Yeah, we can help you with your insurance.
That would be wonderful.
Okay.
Okay. I'm familiar with all the other general liability tracks, but never event insurance, so any help I can get is great. Thank you.
Awesome idea.
Yeah, thank you.
I love it.
Troy does a fantastic job for the Fourth of July. We always take our trucks over there, and I was like, we got to do something here. And I always decorate, out at my shop, dump truck, excavator, I mean, something, and you go there in the mornings and you see little kid footprints all the way down the track. People take their kids out, and I was like...
Maybe they're not kids, maybe they're...
Maybe, maybe, maybe. I thought we've got to do something. We've got to. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Next person, public, other public comments? Items not on the agenda? Other public comments for items not on the agenda? Other public comments? Then seeing none, I will, we will go back to the agenda, which the first item is Heritage Museum. Sherry Turner wants to talk to us about the update, the Montana State Tourism Grant. For the Shea.
Yes, thank you. I have been going around to all of Libby's different councils and boards and letting them know that we're working on an effort to apply for a very large state grant for tourism. And the particular focus that the museum has for this is the finishing, the rebuilding of the Shea. I personally really believe that the Shea locomotive would cause a lot of people that just drive through and don't stop to stop and maybe ride the train. So, and that might get them to see some of the other opportunities that are here for So the Shea is the main focus, but we were told when we applied last spring with, I think, six other rural communities in Montana, that our partnerships weren't strong enough. So what we've really tried to do this time, we're doing it alone by ourselves for all of Lincoln County. It includes Troy, specifically the Troy Museum and the Eureka Museum, but the chambers for all three towns are also in this time, and they had, the museums had originally in the spring a couple of projects, which we really wanted to make sure they got in the mix for this time around. And we have, I gave you a briefing paper, I think we have about, let's see, 17 steering committee members right now, which have got wide representation, and really, really happy with the way it's going. And I have one project on there that is, I found out, would be for the city, and that is the re-siting of the Logging Hall Road Bridge over at Puyanore. I walk there almost every day with my dogs and my grandkids when they're in town, and the ties that are on the side now, some of them you can see daylight through. So it's, it needs to be fixed. I have talked to TCI, they're going to get me a, just a estimate for the actual grant, but I found out that your council is actually in charge of the bridge, so I need to ask if you want to be part of the grant.
The bridge has actually been on our radar for a while because it has had so much vandalism, which is part of, you know, part of our problem of trying to keep the fence and stuff up. I would suggest that you come in and talk to Mr. Sykes about what, how that grant will work and what we would need to put together, to, because we would be very interested in getting that bridge repaired, because we've tried to brainstorm solutions and haven't, it's been beyond our means at this point, so.
Okay. Yes, the Port Authority has, has been working with us quite a bit. I actually thought it was their jurisdiction, but they told me no.
Oh, the city actually owns the bridge, yes.
Yeah.
So, okay. Any questions for Ms. Turner regarding that?
Are there natural requirements for?
There are not.
None, so.
This is a very large, five-year grant, and people that I, even at the museum, they're, they're like, well, we did, we did the route, but it was a year. I mean, it was just, it took us three years to actually prepare, get the grant, do the work, but, you know, this is a longer and larger grant, but that's what it's going to take to do the Shea. The Shea is, the guys have been working on it since 2017, and they literally are to the point where they have it all parked, they drilled out all the old bolts and everything, and now it needs specialists who, who do rebuild old trains. And I found a company in, out of Tennessee, they have, I think, three different crews in different locations around the U.S. The closest to us is Durango, and they have already rebuilt a Shea to running order, and they are currently, right now, have a second Shea in their shop in Tennessee that they're returning to work in order. And so they want to do ours, and I really think we want them to. They know what they're doing, and, and they're willing to help us as far as getting the grant, helping us get the estimates, and so I really, I really feel good about that. If you have anything else, oh, in the midst of this preparation, we found this wonderful painting by Clayton Peterson. His son actually lives practically across the street from me, and didn't even know that he had this painting, his original painting, in his house, which he said he will eventually gift to the museum, but not yet. And he gave us rights to do with this whatever we would like, and one of the projects we'll see on there is that the Central School would like to paint this picture on the side of the Shea so that people could see it driving by, they could see the picture at, at the museum, so. If you have, if you know anyone else who would like to be part of this, please let me know. I sent, you'll have my email.
I give you your names.
Because I sent everyone the link to the new video. One of our volunteers has been preparing a video for, oh gosh, maybe almost a year. I know he's been working on it since the spring, and maybe as long as a year, and he has dug up so many old photos and letters, I love the letters. The letters talk about the loggers and their families and how it was back in the day. And I'm just, I'm just really pleased with what he put together. It's just, he, he's a professional videographer, but he's retired, and we're lucky to have his expertise here and working, volunteering at the museum, so.
Any questions?
Well, I thank you for your passion and dedication to the museum and pursuing all the funding sources, and I totally support this project, and I think we should absolutely add on the bridge.
Does the council, Gail is probably going to be on the, if there's enough funding, she's going to be a member on the steering committee, and I didn't know if you would represent the council too, or?
I don't know. Historic Hotel Libby is in with this grant.
Okay.
And so I don't know, I would have to...
We will have to, yeah, look at that. Okay? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm going to open it up for public comments regarding this update on this grant request. Any public comments? Any public comments? Okay, seeing no public comments, we will continue with our agenda. The next up is the Pure North, the contract update for Pure North. That's kind of been in the works for, for a while. It was in Mr. Taylor's committee. Did you have any comments you want to make?
Well, it's been in the works for a while. We were reviewing some contracts. This one has not been, there have been no rate increases on this since 2017. So we looked up what we thought was a fair procedure here to move it forward. It'd be about a $50 a month increase, with every two-year, about 5% increase after that. They're paying their sewer and water bill, and those are the highlights of the changes.
We did increase the liability insurance from $1 million to $2 million.
Yes.
Which is, no, it's okay, that is coming in a requirement from MMIA now that any group has a $2 million insurance. They, $1 million is no longer sufficient, so. Any question? Comments?
I'll make a motion that we approve the lease.
Second.
Okay. If the council doesn't have any comments, I'll open it for public comment. Are there any public comments regarding the lease for Pure North? Mr. Orr?
So this is an improvement over what we have become used to out here. We actually do have the dollar amount that Mac shall pay, $1,064.09 per month. Now I expect that's tied to a square footage. Knowing that Mayor and Council refuse to answer questions, I was going to ask if, in the future, we could have a square footage number with these kind of contracts so that we know, you know, is the county paying the same amount per square foot for what they do, what they rent here, and just kind of get an idea that you really are doing your homework, and you know you got a good deal. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments regarding the Pure North lease? Then I'll bring it back to the council. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Sorry, Ian. Ian muted himself back, and so. The motion carries, the lease is approved. Brings us up... Brings us next to the request, approved submission of the 2025 Road to Zero Community Traffic Safety Grant. That is something that our Chief Erkenbrock is looking to put together. He was gonna tell us, I did put the basic requirements, an overview of the grant in the packet, but he was gonna talk to us about some specifics regarding that, that request.
Mayor, Council, this is what I'm super excited about. The Road to Zero Coalition is focusing mainly on lowering crashes and specifically fatality crashes. We're pretty fortunate here in Libby that we don't have too many, but any kind is too many. So we're gonna do all we can to prevent that. I found this grant, I was really excited because the main focus of it is right here. It says, "The Road to Zero Community Traffic Safety Grant Program is focused on supporting innovative and promising approaches for implementing evidence-based countermeasures, supporting a safe system approach, and performing necessary research to address traffic fatalities, serious injuries, and disparities in mobile safety and access." One of the big parts that they're going for is divvying down on proven evidence-based strategies and advancing lifesaving technology in vehicles and infrastructure. So for this grant, its range is $50,000 to $200,000. And I am requesting up to, just under $180,000 for this grant, which would supply three new speed radar signs to be placed around town, focusing mostly on the school zones, seven body cameras, six in-car cameras for patrol cars, a server and a patrol car. All of this also includes the installation and software required for all these upgrades. The new in-car camera system and body camera systems all connect to each other. The new advanced technology, making videos better. More functionally, it's a lot easier to use in courts to either prove innocence or obviously to prove our cases against. Super excited about it. And the best part is that it is a full grant and there are no matching funds. So we're really excited about it. Like, and the focus I had on there was for school zones and increasing that safety there, being that there are just over 3,000 citizens in Libby. On any given school day, there are 1,100 students between the two schools. So that huge influx of kids obviously is a massive part of our community. I mean, we do all we can to protect them. So that was the main part of that grant. And so we're pushing forward with it. And if you're approval, would you like to apply for those funds?
Council have any questions?
No, just fantastic. Good job.
Make a motion to approve the submission of the 2025 Road to Zero Community Traffic Safety Grants?
Second. Okay. You have any, don't have any comments or questions? I will open it up for public comment. Does the public have any comments on the subject of this grant? Any public comments on the subject of this grant? Public comments? Okay, here, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council table. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will get the paperwork signed so you can get that submitted. Thank you very much for your hard work. I appreciate it. Next up is approved Resolution 2050, Authorization to Submit the MSEP, Wastewater Infrastructure Planning Grant. Our PER, a preliminary engineering report for the wastewater plant is almost aged out. We've done a lot of the projects. We need to update it and get a new one so that we don't miss any grant cycles. So Andy Evansen has identified a couple of grants for us. One of them is the MSEP grant. The grant amount is about $40,000 with a $10,000 match. So the request is that you approve the submission of the application and the authorization to, to sign and submit it.
I'll make a motion we approve Resolution 2050?
Second. Any questions about the preliminary engineering report for the wastewater?
What's the date of our last one?
I wanna tell you 17, but is it 19 or 17? I think it's 17.
It was 17 and we've completed all the projects that were in it. And the last two that we received were only 15 grand each. So this one will be a lot less matching funds totally.
But I guess it's in the cycle for, to, yeah.
We can't get grants without.
We can't get grants without an updated preliminary engineering report. And so to not miss that cycle, we need to keep, keep current. Oh, sorry.
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 Melissa, second.
Yes. Okay, any public comments? Any public comments regarding the preliminary engineering report for the wastewater? Mr. Orf? Sorry, I got lost.
So one of the things council could do a little bit better is let the public know that you are collecting plant investment fees from people who hook up to the water and sewer systems. We recognize that our sewer systems at, I think, 65%. There's a lot of development going on down at the Port Authority. And you guys have not really done a good job of letting us know that the people hooking into the system are going to pay for the infrastructure that we've already paid for and that we, the taxpayers, the ratepayers, have to pay to maintain. So in the future, I'd, I'd like to, something like this comes up, I'd like to have you say, well, we, we have plant investment fees from that project that are already in the kitty. But we never hear anything about plant investment fees. Thank you.
Any other public comment regarding Resolution 2050? Any other comments? Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll get that grant submitted in the next couple of days. Brings us to award the bid for the Spruce Street Reconstruction Project to, and signing that documented contract to, and the bid was posed to Noble Construction. And we'll be using slip-up funds for that construction.
May I, Mayor, if I could, update on the funding?
Yes, you may.
The funding for this project, the State and Local Infrastructure Partnership Act, they're giving us $231,304. Out of the gas tax fund, we're pulling $57,826. That's $289,130. We're also pulling $15,000 out of the gas tax for the engineering that's been completed. If you do the math, that leaves that there's $12,866.05 left. We're gonna use that as a contingency in case we hit something. And then right there at the end, if we have hit a contingency, we'll do a change work order. And we'll get a few more feet of asphalt or a few more feet of sidewalk completed. That'll complete this project. And then for Phase One, Phase Two, we'll be looking at using gas tax funds to complete from basically Michigan going all the way to the fence line. Of course, Bruce, once we get it rededicated.
Okay, in your packet, there is a, a letter from TDNH saying that TDNH has determined the bids submitted by Thompson Contracting and Noble Excavating to be responsible and complete. But they, our, our evaluation of the experience, reputation, and financial condition of Noble Excavating indicates they can complete the work required. Therefore, we recommend the city would be award the contract for construction of Libby 2024 Spruce Street Reconstruction to Noble Excavating. And the, the back page has all the bid information and the engineer's estimate. They did open those bids here last Wednesday. Any questions, Mr. Sykes?
Maybe just remind folks where the reconstruction is, not just here.
Reconstruction for Spruce Street will actually start at Highway Two up here by Riddle Place. We were hoping to start further up this way, but once we got the engineering, we found out that the stormwater wouldn't flow properly. So we're actually starting it right there at the apron on Spruce. Brand-new sidewalks and the actual proper curving, a new road that'll come up. And it'll be basically where Michigan hits is where we're gonna end up stopping. But we are putting an ADA compliant crosswalk through there because it is eventually gonna be used as a road as the port develops that area. So we're wanting to get that fixed now. Leaving the most important part, which will be the new curving and sidewalk for the tennis court area onto the gas tax, when it's for Phase Two.
Any other comments?
Make the motion, we, we award the contract to Noble Excavating for the recommendation for the Spruce Street Reconstruction.
Second.
And that you also authorize the submitting, signing and submitting of the contract? Yes, thank you. It wasn't on the agenda, but they, they said this afternoon that that kind of needed to be in the wording. So, okay. And a second? So I'll open it up for public comments. Any public comments on the Bruce, Spruce Street Reconstruction bid? Mr. Orf?
ACOR 1117, Nevada Avenue. Once again, I just wanna point out that we have a project that is more or less for the benefit of development at the Port Authority. And I stood up here and railed at length about how the county takes advantage of the city. I wanna hear that you guys are going to the county and making them pay for some of this stuff. I don't think that it's fair that the city continues to pay for development at the port and the port doesn't kick in anything. They're the ones who are gonna benefit from it. I'd like to see you guys go to bat for the people you claim to serve.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. So Mr. Sykes will take care of the paperwork that needs, that needs to go to the state in regards to the slip-up grant. And we'll get the contract signed and back to TDNH. That brings us to the items that are on the agenda regarding the recommendations out of the Streets Committee. The first item would be that, that we reduce the speed limit on Mineral Avenue from 25 to 20 miles an hour, beginning at Eighth Street and continuing down to First Street. Apparently, the committee was not able to identify any good place to place the sign coming off of Highway Two, so they chose to move it down a block to Eighth Street. Is that correct? So, Mr. Zimmerman, do you have any other comments out of the committee regarding that agenda item?
I don't believe so.
Okay. And it was determined that the municipalities can lower, determine speeds, speed limits without a study. I was trying to say speed study, though.
Make a motion that we approve the Streets Committee recommendation for the speed reduction on Mineral Avenue from 25 miles an hour to 20, beginning at Eighth Street and continuing to First Street.
A second.
Okay. Do you have any, does the council have any comments regarding it? It's been a much discussed topic, so. I will open it up for public comment. Are there any public comments on the reduction of the speed limit of Mineral Avenue? Any public comment? Okay, any public comment? Seeing no public comment, then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, then we will set that into motion. The next was to approve the stop sign placement at Fourth and Mineral. That also has been highly discussed in the committee.
I would make a motion to approve stop sign placement at Fourth and Mineral?
Second.
Any comments regarding that item? Then I open it up for public comments. Are there any, is there any public comment regarding the placement of a stop sign at Fourth and Mineral? Any public comment? Okay, seeing no public comment, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will take care of that stop sign. And then the placement, next item is approve the stop sign placement at Sixth and Mineral. It was a little fuzzy if that was the total council's interest or not. So I know it was brought up by Mr. Taylor. And other, some other people thought, indicated they were approved, so.
I'll make a motion to approve stop sign placement at Sixth and Mineral?
A second.
Okay, any comments regarding that stop sign? Then any public comments regarding the placement of a stop sign at Sixth and Mineral? Public comments? Okay, public comments? So all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And then the last was the lower offer to fund, to grant fund the crosswalk flags for Mineral Avenue. And I did print out some information from Kirkland, Kirkland, Washington. They seem to have those yellow flags with the pedestrian symbol on them in the emblem, their logo from the city. And that seemed to be the best I could find. There were, but they do create these in-house, I just, I found out. And you can buy plain orange ones off of Amazon. But I, Mr. Williams is going to talk to Twisted Turtle to see if we could get something locally printed very similar to that and see how much that would cost. So, yes.
Will there be something on them so that we can identify them should they take a walk about?
We would be putting the city's logo on them to identify them as property.
So it says that it has a.
There was some question and answer. I also included, yes.
Yeah, well, just that, where was this from, in Washington?
This curve in Washington. It seemed to, they had.
They have a volunteer that maintains it?
They do, they have a volunteer that maintains the flags moving from, making sure they're in the proper locations and they all haven't migrated to the left side, even on that.
So they're on both sides?
Both, so they're even, even on both sides and that kind of stuff.
So are we gonna have a volunteer that?
That would be a good question.
I think we should look into putting like little air tags on them or something.
Yes. So that when they disappear.
GPS tracker. I mean, they make like little tiny things so you can just put them on.
Was there any information about these ones leaving their places and never coming back?
That wasn't anything I found in the documentation.
They're not gonna tell you that.
Well, they used to have all orange ones. Now they only have the orange ones in the outlying areas. And they have these yellow ones in the central business. So probably they might have migrated a few of them away. But, so we're continuing to do some investigation on how to implement this program. And I did say that Tabitha is willing to put $10,000 into, into the program if we decide to move in that direction.
Do we know about what a set costs?
No, I can't find any pre-done sets just out there to buy.
Get them up, right?
Yes. So it seems that we will have to maybe make the components or, or whatever unless I finally turn up some, some containers and. Mr. Williams?
The orange, the generic orange, they run about 780 a flag. If I was to order them out of, out of one of the traffic sign magazines I have, where you don't wanna sign it from. Jeff hasn't, they haven't got a price together yet, but the ones that he's looking at are 11 by 14 and a half. So they're fairly, fairly decent size. So he's gonna get, I requested 48, a price of 48. So we got eight intersections, six intersection, three aside, so the starting point. And he only, he said he's giving them a couple of days and they'll get that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or anything? Open it up for public comment regarding the cross flag program. It has a name, pedestrian flags.
I guess this entails all four of those, so I just wanted to come up and ask. Now that everything has been approved, how soon until we see all of this happen? I know you guys have to make on the flags, the stop signs, how long until we get to see those? So, just out of curiosity, with all of it together. And also Carol and I both spoke, we went volunteer for 4th Street, essentially helping those flags, setting them up or whatever needs done as well. So I'm just wondering with all of it together, how long it would take for the stop signs to get put in?
And I don't have an estimate at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? Okay, then we'll move on to ordinance 2045. Ordinance 2045 is one of the ordinances requested by law enforcement. It is an ordinance adding a new chapter to Title IX, Public Peace Morals and Safety, entitled aggressive solicitation, and adding definitions to same. We've been looking at this for a couple of weeks, so a couple of meetings, I should say. So is there any comments about it at this point?
I would make a motion to approve ordinance 2045.
Okay. Okay, so, so, does the council have any questions or comments?
I have a question from Chief, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Chief, after reading this and reviewing this, wouldn't this basically be the same as disorderly conduct?
It is similar, absolutely.
What is the need for this if disorderly conduct would cover this?
Disorderly conduct definitely kinda falls more towards people acting aggressively, not so much getting in your face to ask for money. That's not a full word for thing. Disorderly conduct falls more in the dabble realm.
You still have to have a victim.
Correct. Yep, so we get a call that someone's being accosted near a store or something like that, then we can go in and handle that situation. And then we have that victim, and then we can see the appropriate response. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Thank you. Any public comments on ordinance 2024, aggressive solicitation? Any public comment? Any public comment? Then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion?
Aye.
Okay, are you voting for or against?
I'm opposed.
I'm opposed, okay. So five to one. Ordinance does, the motion does carry, and so that was first reading of ordinance 2045. Moves on to ordinance 2046, urinating and defecating in public places, an ordinance adding a new chapter to Title IX, Title IX, Public Peace Morals and Safety, entitled urinating and defecating in public places. We've also had this for a couple of meetings and have discussed and looked at it and discussed it. Any questions at this point?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2046.
Second.
Okay, any comments? Okay, open it for public comments on ordinance 2046.
Vince Backen, 427 Thomas Street. I'm just curious, I like the ordinance, by the way. I'm just curious, Chief, if someone steps out of a bar, like they've been doing all my life, and urinates on the side of the wall in a public place, does that crime then go to a sexual crime where they have to then register as sexual abuse?
It doesn't now.
Okay, any other public comments? Any other public comments? Then all in favor of the, of ordinance 2046?
Aye.
The motion carries. Moving on to ordinance 2047, an ordinance adding a new chapter to Title IX, Public Peace Morals and Safety, entitled camping, sleeping, motor vehicles, and storage of personal property, and adding definitions to same.
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2047.
Second.
Okay, are there any, we've also had this one for a couple of meetings, or any discussion or questions? And I would open it for public comment regarding ordinance 2047, camping, sleeping, and motor vehicles and storage, public and... Any public comment? Public comment? Then all in favor?
Aye.
Can move, move on to 2048, an ordinance amending 128-020, parking violations declassified as misdemeanors.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2048.
Second.
Okay, any questions regarding this ordinance? We've also had that one for a couple of weeks. Any public comments on ordinance 2048? Mr. Orr?
So I've been at all these meetings, and no one has ever explained what it means to declassify a misdemeanor. Since you are allowing questions of the chief, I'll ask the chief what does that mean.
So technically, most citations in Montana are considered misdemeanor. So it just changed the program, misdemeanor to an infraction, which is justified.
Actually, miss, they, it is part of the ordinance title as it sits now. It's not a new word being added.
So what this means is that under the old law, you had a right to remain silent, you had the right to an attorney, you have rights. Under this new law, you have no rights. You just pay a fine, or else. You guys are giving up the rights to the people you claim to serve. You're stealing rights if you're approved of this. Thank you.
Any other pub, any other public comments? Public comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Move on to ordinance 2049, amending Title XVII, Chapters 12, 16, 17, and 20, entitled Residential A, Residential B, Residential C, and Business Residential, respectively.
Make a motion, we approve ordinance number 2049.
I'll second.
Okay, yeah. We've also had several conversations about this ordinance. Does council have any questions this time?
I do have one, please. I'm sorry. On the residential business district, under the performance standards, the 17 day dot 20 dot 050, under B, height of buildings may not be taller than adjacent properties that are in different districts, and may not exceed the 45 feet, of course. I just have a question on... How was, how was the zoning, I mean, if you're, if you're looking across the street and it's all single-level homes, not, no two-stories, and somebody on the, across the street wants to then build a two-story, are we saying that they can't build a two-story?
Well, I, I will just tell you the explanation that the commission was, was trying to get to, and that was a concern for properties that are not businesses and adjacent, but adjacent to, potential businesses that could be tall. And so they, the commission tried to figure out a way to address that with this provision to maintain some compatibility with adjacent uses.
So?
Streets were not discussed.
Okay.
From across the street.
Okay, well, when you're saying different districts, so that's why I'm assuming across the street.
Typically, yes, but there are district boundaries that go down the alley, which would have a lot more impact.
So is this saying that, 'cause for some reason I thought we did, like, we talked about a percentage, 'cause otherwise everybody's gonna stay the same height, even though they can go up higher, and now nobody can because your neighbor is this tall.
This is what the commission approved.
Right. But I'm, but it can be warped and kinda change it.
Yeah, and this is, this is what the council can do.
Right.
The way I explain this when it's, came into me, you got two different districts, so you have to draw that line, and I'll use Ace Wood as an example. You have single-family houses, then you have that larger chunk of property. It's only that first building. So, because we're talking about different districts, so this one would be the same height for that first row, but then the next row over could be taller apartments, 'cause now it's within that same district. That's what provides that transition so that we don't get a five-story apartment blocking all the sunlight from the house within a different district, if that makes sense.
Excellent, thank you.
That's how I explain it.
Got it.
Thank you.
I guess the only thing I'm thinking about are a few of the areas that we, 'cause we don't have much left that's empty, unless people buy up residence and tear down old houses to build new stuff, but is the fact that there would be some of these that I just don't know about the, I understand the five stories, but of course, they couldn't go with five stories without a variance anyways, 'cause of our 45 feet, but... I just have a question about that, I just do. You know, I totally understand the, the little guy sitting there and the big one, but it's the, to me, there is not enough definition, I guess. It's, it's pretty wide open, I guess. You know, like I say, the-
It's pretty straightforward to me, so your building, if, if there's new construction, and like Mr. Sykes was saying, it can't be taller than the adjacent property, if there's, if your property line is in a different district, you know, they, about each other.
We're gonna need a picture in this.
So, here, here, I'm just, I'm just gonna throw this out, you tell me. So there's, there's five lots on one side of the block. Let's say there's two two-story houses on the two corners, then you have one level living. Somebody builds the one, has the one in the middle and wants to build another two or three-story. They can't, they can only build a one-story because of the two adjacent.
In the same district.
If it's, yeah, if it's in a different district, if it's in the middle, it would be likely in the same district.
Right. This is specific to different districts.
Two different, the, the, the district boundary falls on a property line. So right next to you, for instance, your, your property line would be the zoning district boundary, which means your adjacent property, your neighbor, could build something that's very out of character for the neighborhood and affect, you know, your ability to, your property differently than what you expected. It's a shared property line with two different zoning districts.
Thank you for refreshing my memory.
So it'd have to be a boundary line between a residential A and a residential B, then?
Right, Business Residential. There's, there's a, not, when we talked about this in the commission, there's probably not very many instances where that's going to be an issue, based on what's currently constructed, but there are a few properties that are undeveloped.
Are there any que, while he's mulling it over, are there any other questions or comments?
I'll just say the same thing I said before, I know this was written in 1987, being revised and changed, just for the sake of change, I don't think it's necessarily a good thing.
Well, I disagree, it's just for the sake of change. I think it's to, as the memo identified, the need for improved clarity and the need to address certain things that have changed, that have changed, that we have not been able to address because of codes.
And there was words in there that I've never even heard in my entire life, so it made no sense.
Some of them were a little.
Yeah.
But the key to this particular one at D is different districts, that's the key.
Any other questions? Mr. Zimmerman, are, you still mulling, or are you?
I, I'm just computing everything.
Okay.
But no, I, I understand it, I just, I'm trying to make sure it's the, the right thing, that's all.
Okay. Is it okay if I go public comment?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Any public comments? Oh, I didn't know.
Yeah, sorry, no.
You still wanted to talk, I know. Any, any public comments on ordinance?
621 Utah?
Yes.
I agree with your questions, Brian, very much so. I've seen where people complain about building their porch out and coming to council members because it's obstructing their view. It's, it's, it's not about what you're hearing, but I do understand how that works, where you live in a block, you know, that things have been swayed, whereas your porch can't go past that person's porch, and it's not you, where even going up to that level is , it's been a struggle. I see it sometimes. And I could give you an example sometime personally. I'm not in front of the council. It's a good question you brought up, it's very vague, whereas who makes that decision about how high your house can go, how far your porch can go, and standards of peace and all that stuff, but I guess you know, time where somebody says, oh, you can't build your porch out two blocks down from a residential, or 10 feet off the back of the sidewalk, and the next house is, no, you're not allowed to build 25 feet from the back of the sidewalk, and there's no consistency. And it's then you're, I really understand where your confusion is, 'cause I don't think there's anything in this town that's not confused about your choices, you know, when you say blocks, you know. It's a good question, and don't, don't, don't sign on to anything until you know, and you get your mindset about what's being talked about. I appreciate your conversation.
Any other public comments?
Tina Alphant, 815 Minnesota. So I heard some comments about, does this make anything better? I just wanna say, as someone who's gonna use this as soon as it's ruled, on two of the multi-acre areas in town, one which will be a requirement to annex, so we're trying to abide by the city, that this language and- that this language, and you can see how much I scratched it up, I found it very helpful. It added a lot of clarity, and it also helped sort of facilitate understanding the city's vision, so that when we apply and send in the application for this, we can be aligned with that better, and we can speak to that. So, I thought this was a really good effort. Thank you for that, I'm just waiting for it to be approved. So, I think that's all.
Any other public comments, Mr. Ork?
So, everybody's talking about clarity, but it seems we don't really have clarity yet. Legislation is a multi-tiered effort. And what happens is, what's supposed to happen is, say, a zoning commission is supposed to come to the council and say, we're going to be talking about this. Now, they don't expect you to come to all of their meetings. And so, you should be presented with minutes at some point, which explain with clarity what was discussed at the meeting. We don't get minutes. I've stood up here and complained more than once that some of the commission chairs do not give clarity in their committee reports. Zoning commission is a very... They offend regularly. Zoning commission regularly says, next meeting is next Tuesday. That is not a committee report. You guys should have had the opportunity to discuss this after reading the minutes, after hearing the committee reports. You should have had plenty of opportunity to get clarity on this issue. But when you allow the committee chairs to violate law, to understand that it is Montana law that you keep minutes of the meetings, you're not going to have clarity. What you're going to have is bully tactics. And you guys are being bullied, and I expect you guys to stand up and say, we're not going to give in to bully tactics. We're going to look out for the people we claim to serve. And if you want to try this again, try it with clarity, try it with public interaction, try it the right way, like legislators would do. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Any other public comments? Or public comments, then all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Danny.
Okay, that would be four.
What was Ian's?
I believe Ian was opposed.
Yes, I'm opposed.
Okay, so the vote is four to two. First reading does pass. Move on to approve all claims received to date. Did everyone get a chance to see the claims?
Make a motion, we approve all claims received to date.
A second.
Any questions? Any public comments on the claims? Any public comments? There are no public comments. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? A motion carries, claims are approved, approve all business license received to date. Jessica's odd jobs and ortho-apothecary massage. The Libby Pond application was pulled for a later date, so...
Approve all business license received to date?
Second.
I guess should make a motion. Sorry.
Any others, any questions regarding these public, these business licenses? Any public comments regarding the business licenses? Public comments? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Before we move on to unfinished business, I'm going to back up just a minute. With the ordinances that were recommended for the law enforcement, I had put in my memo that unless counsel wished, indicated a desire to move forward with the distracted driving, that we would not have any more, we would not be revisiting that. Chief Erkenbrock did put out a memo. I sent it out this afternoon, and I think I gave out printed comments where he would like to make a case for, for that, looking, us looking at the distracted driving. And I had told him he would get a chance to bring his case forward. So, for the council could make a decision on whether or not they wanted to actually revisit that question.
Okay.
Everybody have the memo?
Did anybody get a chance to read it yet? Maybe some of you?
I'm just scanning.
I had the highlights for you. The big thing that I kind of want to cover is both points, and then we're, addressed a couple of the questions that came up in the last meeting that we had. Just some stats in regards to this. Says, according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, three thousand five hundred and twenty-two people were killed in distraction driving-related crashes in two thousand twenty-one, counting approximately eight percent of all traffic fatalities. Center of Disease Control and Prevention highlights that distracted driving contributes significantly to crashes involving teens, with about thirty-nine percent of high school drivers reporting texting or emailing while driving in the past month. Distraction driving is not limited to texting, includes eating, adjusting navigation systems, interacting with passengers. All activities proven to impair focus and reaction time. In Montana, driver fatalities averaged two hundred and forty in two thousand twenty-two, with May linked to driver intention. Montana Department of Transportation notes that distracted driving is an under-reported factor in crashes, making it difficult to gauge its full impact. Montana statewide crash database indicates that distraction-related crashes tend to be more severe if drivers are less likely to take evasive action to avoid collisions. Continuing down, says, while Montana laws such as reckless or chaos driving, as well as other statutes, may address some consequences of distracted driving, for example, swerving, speeding, violation of the deal, these laws are reactionary. These laws and citations address symptoms of distraction driving, and are addressing the actual problem. They only come into play after a dangerous situation or crash has already occurred. A distracted driving ordinance would allow officers to proactively address unsafe behaviors before they escalate to tragedy. This would allow officers to deter the behavior before it becomes dangerous. The distracted driving ordinance would consider a primary offense, consisting with almost all other states. Nebraska and South Dakota are the only states who have it as a secondary offense. Primary offense allows an officer to stop a vehicle if they observe a driver texting or driving, texting and driving, pardon me, or doing other activities contrary to the ordinance, whereas a secondary offense means that the officer would need to observe a separate violation, such as a moving violation or equipment violation, to initiate the traffic stop, and then address the distracted driving as well. While some drivers may feel confident and safe using their phones while driving, research shows that this perception is dangerously misleading. Studies from the National Safety Council reveal that even hands-free phones use delays as the driver's reaction time to the same extent as having a blood alcohol concentration concentrate of a point oh eight, the legal limit for impaired driving. Texting or other manual phone use is even more hazardous, increasing the risk of a crash by the twenty-three times, according to Federal Motor Carrier Safety Administration. In Montana, a report from the Montana Department of Transportation found that distracted drivers are three point six times more likely to be involved in crashes resulting in injury or death compared to attentive drivers. This underscores the reality that divided attention, no matter how minor it seems, significantly compromises driving ability. We've been very fortunate that, again, we haven't suffered from a lot of these crashes and fatalities. But, being able to enforce this and help deter that behavior, more so than treating symptoms, kind of like I was talking about with the speeding done to maintain lane, those are symptoms of the actual problem. If we can address the problem, prevent that, then you're not going to have any other issues. So, this is a great tool for us to use. Obviously, even no matter what, the council is representing the community, and what the community wants is what we will enforce. But statistically shown, distracted driving is a huge risk for our community. And we'd like to get ahead of that, to be able to make a safer environment for ourselves, for our children, and for tourism.
Thank you. So, does the council have any interest in revisiting this issue?
Well, I think it's certainly compelling data.
Okay. And Ian's saying he does not. Okay.
I don't mind revisiting it, but...
I don't mind revisiting it.
I don't either.
Okay. Okay. If the consensus seems to be you're willing to revisit it, I can put it on the next agenda, and we can have the discussion again, and move from there, okay?
Good.
Sorry about getting out of order there. Moved on to the unfinished business of the development fund policy, which has not made any forward progress. And then, did the discussion, any council comments on items? Anybody in the council want to have any items they want to bring up? No, then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ian is adjourned.